We've called the January meeting of the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals to Order tonight. And I had planned, I mentioned to anyone in the audience that we're, this is not City Council, they're meeting in chambers tonight, but since the petitioner apparently is the one here, other than city staff and the members of the board, I don't need to make that announcement. Brief introduction, the zoning board appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council for past judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in order that they appear on the agenda. When the item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. Petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to, probably up to Mr. Evans, I would assume, to sign in and let us know. They should identify themselves with their name and address, indicate their relationship with the property in question, for example, a next door neighbor, and state whether they are in favor of or in opposition to the variance request and give the reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertaining to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone a request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant does have the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland Circuit Court. And briefly to introduce both the board members and city staff that are here at the table this evening, starting on my left is Thomas Stratt, who is also not only a member of the board, but our liaison to the planning commission. Next to him is Ken Courtney. Next to Ken is Bill Fisher. Between Bill and myself is Susan Lancaster, an assistant city attorney, myself, Dave Lambert, the chair. Next to me is Paul Evans from the planning office. And then last but not least, Glenn Clark, a member of the board. And with that, we'll have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartnik, Mr. Clark, here. Mr. Courtney, here. Mr. Fisher, here. Mr. Neal, Mr. Lambert, here. Mr. Stratt, here.
And we have received a notice, email notice, from Mr. Bartnik that he will not be here tonight. And Mr. Neal indicated that he might be running late. He had another engagement to try to take care of, so he may or may not make it in time for the meeting as completed. And go on next to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November meeting? Mr. Courtney has moved seconds by Mr. Fisher. And discussion on the minutes. Seeing none, take the roll call on approval of the November meeting minutes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
The minutes are approved from the November meeting. Approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda that is in front of us tonight? Seeing none, we don't need to make any modifications to the agenda. The first and only case we have tonight in front of us is a variance request from Jim Barrie of Continental Services at 700 Stevenson Highway. Before I turn it over to Mr. Evans to read the information to the board, I would like to ask the petitioner, because of the fact there are two members absent, we're not sure if the last one will be here tonight or not. This act to approve your variance request would require four votes, so you do have the option of postponing action on this, or if you feel that you'd want to have us here tonight with the five that are present, possibly six, it's your decision.
We've postponed the meeting an additional month, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You want to go? Okay, well, we'll deal with the case tonight then. And Mr. Evans, would you present the information, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the east side of Stevenson, north of 14 Mile. On the overhead here, it's the property encompassed in red. The property is 700 Stevenson. This property is own research center. The property to the north and east is also his own research center. To the south is his own office, well, OM. And across the street on Stevenson, those properties are owned industrial business. The nature of this request involves some proposed improvements in the front yard of this property. Now, the front yard is the area delineated by this red line. Everything west of that, or the net line delineates the front line of the building. We're proposing some improvements in the front yard, and our new zoning ordinance prohibits the location in the front yard of some of these improvements. Specifically, the three improvements they're proposing is A, a truck well, right here. B, a self-contained waste receptacle with a brick screen. And C, some additional parking or maneuvering lane in that front yard area. Now, the existing parking lot is grandfathered in, but the new parking lot is, needs a variance. And staff did do some calculations. The applicant is proposing to remove some of the existing parking in the front yard and replace it with landscaping. The net increase in a front yard parking aisle maneuvering lane is 400 square feet. So if he's successful tonight, he'll be allowed to have a truck well, the trash receptacle, and the additional maneuvering area in the front yard, or otherwise it is prohibited.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I noticed that in the outline package that you sent to your office, now, Mr. Evans, where it was easy to understand what the increase of the square footage was regarding parking in essentially the paving area. Can you tell me, do we know, I didn't notice it, do we know plus or minus, are we going to have more landscaping now or less? And if so, do you know how much more than currently exists?
Well, it does appear they're adding more landscaping than definitely, which is what out there. And perhaps the applicant, in his presentation, to answer that question for you.
Yes, these numbers here represent additional hard surface, 2,700 square feet. And we're proposing adding 4,000 green space. So for instance, this used to be parking, and this will become green space. This used to be hardscape, parking, this will become green space. And then also, this currently is an enclosure for what used to be a large gas tank for the previous occupants of the building. That will be removed, and that will become greenscape. So there's actually a net in the front yard. I think we have another slide, there's a net increase of landscaping in the front yard.
Any more questions, Mr. Clark?
Should they be directed to Mr. Evans or you?
Whoever can answer the question.
Mr. Evans, can you tell us the north side of the package, and also you referenced it, the area that the wall, the brick, I'm not sure what you call it, the brick beside or wall south of where the self-contained waste receptacle would be?
Right there?
Yeah, that dark line, that would be brick. Is that correct?
It does say brick screen.
Right. But I mean, like, I guess what I'm asking for is, when you say brick screen, I mean, I understand what's, the space constraints here, but essentially, you'd only notice it was brick if you were going northbound, right? If you looked down to the trailer or the container movable object, you would see the trailer, right? I mean, do I understand that correctly?
No, you, this is...
If I'm looking from, if I'm going northbound on Stevenson, or southbound, and I look due east, what do I see? Do I see a trailer or do I see...
Well, hopefully, you won't see anything, because his owner's intention to put landscaping. There's a current, there's a berm here, an existing berm, about 54 feet. He wants to put landscaping along that berm, because his concern is, he's got potential clients coming into his office. He wants this kind of to feel more natural. It's very important, he's in the food service building business, everything is, you know, looks very clean. So he doesn't want to kind of see the traffic himself. So this would, first of all, would get some landscaping. And then he's even mentioned maybe taking that trash compactor and putting it in the truck, truck well, to kind of bring it down. But whatever is exposed would be surrounded by a brick enclosure. In this case, what you would see in the front would be gates, doors.
Both.
Then the ordinance does require that enclosures on property be screened, and that that screening be at least line of the enclosure that's supposed to screen.
Okay. Then to continue regarding what the applicant just mentioned, regarding the screening, if you look at the picture towards the bottom of the package, it's the suggested of a, what you call it, the hypothetical rendering, and...
What did you say?
It's right, right, where you can actually see the trucks.
Oh, that's him?
With the, oh, there it is, six. Was that six?
Yes.
So what I see to the lower right of that page is, you know, hypothetically, these trucks are parked there, and they're doing their business during business day. And I know that there's a berm there. And I also know that according to the picture, this is going to be mostly large shrubs, shrubbery, and a few landscaped trees. But because, you know, I know a little bit about planted shrubs, it takes perhaps years, even a tree, if it's not a landscape tree, it takes a long time to grow. But I'm kind of curious about that is, you know, I've been on this board for quite some time, and I know that the neighbors sometimes are upset they see things that they never seen before. I'm just curious as to why there aren't more trees proposed here, like evergreens, which will grow out and up. And in that rendering that you've created for us, or you're affirmed in, you can clearly see the trucks through there. I know the trucks aren't going to be there all the time, and I've read the package, they're going to be there for 20 minutes, or 20 minutes could be 40 minutes, and 40 minutes could be an hour and a half. The question is, you know, are they open to perhaps a change in that regard? Just for the screening, you have tall and wide screening, so I think that would take care of most of people's concerns.
Sure. Yeah, he's open to doing whatever it takes with this landscaping, and conceal whatever is objectionable.
Mr. Neal?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. First one would be for Paul, actually. Paul, the previous storage tank that was there, that's been replaced, was that there on the basis of a variance?
That, I don't know.
The question I would have is, if that tank was there, assuming from what I know from only the package, such was the underground tank, if there was a variance already placed for that, is that something you need to now decide?
Presumably, there is a variance for that tank. It's their client to remove the tank.
Right.
So I'm not sure if it would endanger it at all to what they want to do.
Okay, it's just in the same area. I just wondered, it seemed like to me...
Yeah, I'm not sure if the tanks there necessarily give them any right to anything here. As a matter of fact, the requirement that you can't have parking in this area is brand new from April of this year.
Okay. Next question I have, and over to the applicant, and I apologize for the answer to this, but where you have the two trucks that are shaded, are those temporary parking or those long-term? You mentioned $13 for shipments and such, but...
Right.
Well, I'm looking at the drawing that was provided, it would be on page or sheet 16, it's up on the six, there are 20 square feet of extra concrete. There's two trucks. Yeah, is that like, are those to represent permanently parked vehicles on a daily basis or...
They will be in and out. Basically, these are the two trucks that would be owned by Continental. Those would be used for a service, delivering food, maybe coming back and forth through the building, parking there, and then when they need to take food out to the client for the impact, then they would, the trucks would be moving, yeah.
Cool. Move your...
The trash impact?
Yeah, the trash impact. I assume the one end with the widdy axes, that's where the hydraulic pumps are, but that's periodically emptied by a vendor. But as far as painting and keeping it nice, is that property owner or the waste owner?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know if they answered that question. I was assuming the owner owned it, but it would be enclosed, it would be visible. It's a self-enclosed trash compactor, so there's, you know, there's no smell or...
Well, just two other questions. You may have answered this, and I apologize for being late, but if, just so I understand, if we were not to, let's say, for example, I'm giving any idea how I feel about this issue, but if we were not able to support this, how will it impact the tenant's occupancy? Is there another way to get his business done, or is this a significantly important issue?
Well, the issue with this site is, you can see from these two yards, that there's really, there's really no room. Only two options is, I mean, south end of the building and the west end of the building. This, you know, we consider this the front of the building, because this is where the clients would be parking their cars. So for the building itself, it would be very difficult to have the loading in the front of the building. Also, this is a office park, and all these buildings surrounding this building view all these three sides of the building. So this one, this side, fortunately, has a berm to it. Also, if we were to do loading, it would end up being on the center of the building, which would be just as visible from the road.
Yeah, I understand. The building was set up a certain way, and...
Right. And currently, this is where loading occurs in the building.
The only, I kind of respect much, but I wanted to gather, repeat your answer. The only other comment I have is just a question. I mean, you don't even have any answer now, I'm just going to put it out there and say, like, you've known, is, a lot of times, sir, we're asked to look at variances in which there are screen features such as vegetation that get put forth as an option. And they pull up in the laws, but I have one, I'm not really skilled on vegetation. And I know sometimes vegetation, like Mr. Clark said, takes time to mature. But I also know that there's standards out there for architecture and other purposes, you may be more familiar with these than I, that can provide some information as to vegetation that can serve a purpose for screening, and it can also thrive and exist in the location somebody put it. And one of the concerns I have is salt and overspray, which often causes vegetation to die. A lot of times, our problem is, we can prove something with an idea going forward that's going to be there, but then it dies or isn't maintained, or something like that. And two years down the road, it was bad. And I was wondering, is there anything that you can provide us with, or planning commission later perhaps, that can, can answer those questions about longevity, how that vegetation will be maintained, what's a good option, and some backup paperwork that shows like this species of plant will do what we say?
Well, we certainly could supply something. Currently, we don't have a landscape architect on the project at this point. But I think the point of evergreens is a great point as well, just simply because in the winter time, you know, evergreens are never going to be there, and they're going to be, that can, obviously, it's going to be the job of the landscape architect to come up with a plan where, you know, obviously, the vegetation is going to survive.
Yeah, my insurance, just down the road, we can't lease it. And...
I, you know, I talked with the owner, Jim Barrie, and trust me, he would lease something like that, because appearance is everything for him. So for him to have clients parking here and to see, you know, dead vegetation, it's just, there's no way that would be, I know that, no, there would be, no way that'd be acceptable for the client. I don't know how else to promise you that.
Mr. Evans?
Alan, relative to your point, you know, if the proponent site makes references that they are intending on providing a four-season screening, that will effectively screen the proposed semi-trucks and other vehicles that are going to be there, that certainly will be a requirement, when he's approved, but also years down the road. If the board were inclined to grant a variance as well, it would be necessary, but you could put a provision in there specifically stating that the landscaping effectively screened for season, whatever stipulations you may want to put in. But it sounds to me like tonight, he's basically saying, yes, this is what we want to do, and that's going to be included in our minutes, and they'll be required to do it, to receive a variance.
No, I appreciate that. I just, I just want to get that commentary in there, just because it's a common thing that comes up, and, what? Mr. Chairman, I have one other question.
Mr. Stratt?
First of all, I didn't catch your name, and who are you representing?
My name's Matt Hathorn, I'm with Rosetti Architects.
Okay, okay, so you're part of the architectural firm. I have a couple of concerns that I have. I guess first of all, I'd like to ask Paul. Paul, is this going to go before the planning commission?
No.
If this is not going to go before the planning commission, then I really have some real concern as far as the amount of landscaping. You said that you would have your landscape architect come in with the drawings, et cetera. One of our big concerns would be actually screening and having that front entryway would be very, very important for us as, in the planning department, and the, and the planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner. My question to you right now, though, first and foremost, is, what is your hardship? And what are you basing your hardship on?
Our hardship is, there is essentially only two sides of the property which will allow us to locate the loading.
Pardon me?
There's only, there's only basically the south side of the property, and the west side are the only two sides of the property, which will accommodate loading. Obviously, the east and the north side, there's not enough properties to accommodate it. This then is the front of the building, which...
No, I understand that, but we have to define the hardship. Is it the site work? Is it, what is really creating your hardship?
The site is omnidirectional, and basically, we're only left with two options to locate the loading. One, which, you know, obviously, putting loading in the front of the building...
Okay. Are you representing the owner of the building?
Yes.
And this is the tenant? Or are they the owner at the time?
He's, he's currently holding the property, or basically, planning to buy the property from the owner. The Continental is the one posing for the, or petitioning for the variance.
Okay.
And so he's holding the property right now, kind of depending on whether or not we can make the building work, or whether or not he's going to buy this building.
Okay. My concern would be this. Vegetation, of course, during the winter is very sparse, depending on what vegetation you're using, et cetera. So one of the key things that I think that would be recommended here is that you come in with a berm, so that actually you have a solid, you know, area that you can't see through, especially as you drive by. You know, it's a low level kind of a situation. And obviously, you don't want to screen the total building, but you want to screen the low level area that we're talking about. The second thing is that I know that, you know, you're going to have a screen on the compactor or the rubbish area, but invariably, I don't know how many sites I've seen, that the screen doors are wide open, they're not really closed, and highly, it's very difficult to enforce that. So you're looking right on Stevenson Highway. Now, two lots down, we just approved, the planning commission just approved a few months back, a new hotel, or motel, won't in there, hotel. So this is kind of a nice area, as we're talking about. So we want to make sure that at least we preserve as much as possible the integrity of that entire area. Although, I will say this, to me, I really want this to go, and it's my opinion, we want to help you as much as we can. It's very important that we work with you in developing this, and I think that's very important. But I do have some concern. I want to make sure that, number one, your parking is okay, although we know that our parking requirements are far more than what really are required. I don't know exactly what your, what your variance is that you're asking, is strictly the depressed area, and I'm assuming that's a depressed well. Is that depressed?
This is here.
That well?
This is the...
Yeah, I understand. That's for turnaround. Yeah, so that you can actually have your trucks pull in and out. But is that a depressed well?
This is, yes.
Okay. So I know that that's depressed, right? So that's even more concerned, because we do have, you know, semis there, but they're going to be partially blocked. And you have the containers there that you're talking about there, that's good. Okay. As far as I'm concerned, I think your elevations, I really like what you're doing. But I would carry that screen all the way around. As pointed out, when you're going southbound, can you see it? As you're going southbound, can you see all that? So as far as I'm concerned, where you have that dark green, I'd carry that all the way around, so that you have a berm as well as the vegetation going all the way around, so it looks attractive. But I like what you're doing, but I still don't understand what the hardship really is. The configuration of the building, I don't know. Paul, I don't really wonder the hardships that we have to identify in order for this to go through, but it's, could be the, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like to me that the hardship is really the site itself, the configuration of the site. But I, you're going to have to come up with your own interpretation, and we can vote on it. But I don't know, Paul. I don't know what to tell you. I don't, well, you guys can deliberate.
Well, let's see if there's any more questions from the members of the board, and then we'll go on.
I have a question. Number, where the, where the well is, is it present now, or is that going to have to be...
There's loading there, but there's no well.
And what does the number four say? That's going to be your loading zone, right?
That's loading, right. That's inside the building.
Okay. So that's going to have to be reconfigured inside the building, this is all going to be moved?
The entire interior is just going to be guarded.
Is there any way that we can move that four down by the three, and have the loading coming on the south side of the building, remove one parking out on the west side? Would that alleviate the need for a bearing?
Would it show up to the buildings adjacent? The buildings south and, south and east would see the loading there.
It would. I was just thinking, that's the only other option that looks like a bearing.
Yeah, I think that's the only other option, but it would be objectionable to people...
I agree, I agree.
Because they're, they're elevated, and they're going to be looking down. I do want to make a point, there is a forfeit berm currently that runs all the way around here. And I can assure you that that dumpster doors won't be open, there won't be garbage. I mean, they're a food service company, very, very high end. I mean, appearance is, they don't want to have any kind of appearance that, you know, this is, this place is dirty. I mean, when we talk about production kitchen, you know, everything's, everything, clients come in there, everything has to be super clean, and it's just, he's even, Jim Barrie's even concerned about, he doesn't want to see, he doesn't want to see the road. He wants this vegetation to completely block the road, so when people are in his, on the property, they're not distracted by the noise or, you know, trucks coming by. They feel like they're around the property as opposed to, you know, adjacent to the road.
Any more questions from the board? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to the petitioner's comments, I think it was after Mr. Neal spoke, there was a reference to Mr. Neal's comments, and I, you know, I don't think we were concerned, perhaps, of vegetation that died out, that you would leave, you know, standing in a dead form, you know, via its trunk or what have you. You know, I think my concern certainly, and I'm sure in Mr. Neal's concern, is not to see dead vegetation standing there. You know, I think that is that any vegetation that dies out would have to be replaced without question. And I think also, I was thinking before Mr. Stratt spoke about, you know, a larger berm, which seemed very practical there, and also for a sound barrier as well. And so I would echo his comments there, but I, you know, I, speaking for myself, I would think that it would be not just within the plan, but if we would move forward, we'd have to, as Mr. Evans mentioned, right into the minutes, into the motion for the minutes to show that we would expect, you know, thick and full four-season vegetation there. And I think, based on your renderings here, when I've seen other firms do since I've been on this board, it seems, and I'm not in that world of architectural design, but, or landscape design, but it seems like a lot of the specialists show, like, almost fewer is better. You know, there's a couple landscape trees, a couple landscape shrubs, and then they look good on a page, but in real terms, you know, I think for a variance to be granted, we have to ensure that the surrounding property owners and tenants and so forth are protected by making sure they're not seeing something they perceive to be ugly, if the gates are open or closed. And I don't, I don't discount it regarding the trailer, the compactor, which will be enclosed. I don't doubt that would be the case, so it would simply, would not relate to the gates necessarily, because you have not just city... because you have not just city enforcement officers, but also health inspectors and the local county health department. Having said all that, um, I'd like to see a little bit more on that front, you know, as far as the whole concept. And, um, and maybe Mr. Evans can direct me in this regard, but, uh, in us, that's we could, you know, like what kind of language could be placed in there, get a possible motion tonight to guarantee that this board is satisfied for the future.
Yes, Mr. Stratt?
Can we attach, I guess, either, uh, Slank, Castor, or, uh, Paul? Can we attach certain conditions as a part of?
As long as they're reasonably related to the request, as you can.
I guess my, my big concern is, again, the berm is uncharacterized, so that it's not just a, uh, like someone just plopped a bunch of dirt wherever you have, who's going to be, uh, doing a good job of making that, creating some annihilation and integrating that together. That being said, I don't know how we're going to actually put that in as a part of one of the conditions, but that would be... I do have a couple of other questions, and I, I can understand the concept.
To the, right, this is to the complex, this is...
Yeah, so they're going to come in, so this is really your front entrance. Unfortunately, it faces Stevenson Highway, but your visitors are going to be coming in from that direction more than any... So, an outdoor patio. I see. And, uh, on the entry, I noticed on the rendering, I, I'm assuming that's a glass-in area, and then you're going to do something with, uh, rendering?
Should be the last sheet. More?
Yeah, there it is. What is that?
Um, this is just a initial concept. It's, it's, it's back painted glass, so this is, uh, if we go back to the, the plan, the, the hope is like, um, a lobby area that extends to the outdoor patio, you know? So, want to kind of make that transparent in front of the building.
But that, it's very interesting, and I think that, uh, your firm is a very good firm, so I, um, you know, but I do have, I don't know how to, uh, I don't know how Americans, how that should be.
Great, Shansel, before this, this comes back, when we, we discuss this, um...
Mr. Neil, one thing for, for my...
Before this comes back to the board for us to discuss it, I think you had said that what you plan to do is not needing to go through the planning commission. All right, I just want to make sure. Because I think I, I, I see a way forward to do what...
That's, that's all. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, what we'll do is go to the company representative?
I'm sorry, Matt Hathorn, I'm a senior designer at Rosetti Architects.
Okay, great.
Um, I think that's it.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll go to, oh, yes, Mr. Clark?
One fact, truck is offered as a, I'm not, I'm sure you're not just showing that because of the size, but also, I think it was...
They, they cater, they provide food services for schools, the smaller weddings, but they do kind of higher-end corporate. They do some food there, um, so they're also, their office has orders, so this part will be offices, and then this will be... And this is, um, expansion space, or if somebody, um, wants to rent some space, they can locate it within the building in that case.
Again, when we grant this variance, if we grant it, it goes with the land. It is a variance. So, what you're telling us, that, you know, this tenant's going to do, doesn't necessarily mean that. That's why we want to make sure that what we're doing is going to be in the best interest of the city, you know, as it relates to the visual aspects as well, so that's a very important factor. I mean, we may be picking on you, but we really are, we're trying to work with you.
The owner is investing, buying $500,000 worth of kitchen equipment to put in this room. The whole point of, um... Right here, in the building, um, he wants to make it look like a home, like this, this isn't someplace he moved into, but this is, this is their...
Well, we'll go through the formative step of opening a public hearing and seeing, I want to hear from the public, who should be, Mr. Neal?
I think if there's a way to bring this all together, I agree, and familiar with Rosetti, and I think they'll do a fine job, and it's going to be a better property. Second, I also, however they go about doing it, really needs to have the, the eyes and the blessing of the planning commission. I choose to make this variance work in that part outside of our, our mandate here is his own work. For discussion this tonight, the easiest and most straightforward way, and the benefit of it, is that because our final motion, let's say, down the road, a very wordy motion, is that we, we table the item, like those items that need to be done for by the proper screening. And then when we have that, I don't think it answers all the questions, is that when it comes back to us, it's something very easy for us to either vote up or vote down. I can't feel comfortable voting for this, and actually, I want to vote for this, because I want to help them see their situation. That extra expertise doesn't lead me to comfort level for you to do that.
So, that's not acceptable. Also, planning commission can't take directives. My recommendation that you not send this to planning, but you work out what you're very capable of doing, working out the language, and if it's here tonight, your representative, whether or not your language is something he can comply with. Our planning commission is not paid to design plans. They're paid to review what they think that's unacceptable later.
Mr. Chairman?
Let me ask a follow-up question, then I'll throw it back to Mr. Neal. The suggestion is, uh, a few months ago, when we dealt with the variance for our credit, I mean, up on Rochester, that the, I believe, the screening, landscape screening had to be approved by somebody on planning...
Administrative authority to do that. And, uh, so, I, I, I mean, I was saying this board do it and suggested something, and then given the administration the authority to confirm that's going to work. Designing it, or making a tradition to the variance, none of us are really allowed to design a person's request on, on the variance conditions.
Yep. To answer your question, Mr. Neal?
Actually, our comments there, um, that's, that's my intent, is, and I don't want planning to design for anybody, but there may be, you have to make a plan for it. But, um, I don't, I know what it's like sometimes to have to make citizenry, but that's exactly what I'm aiming to, is, is to... To provide, uh, assistance. I'm not sure if I'm putting the right words. Chairman, just comment on is exactly what I'm trying to wish you to do.
Mr. Courtney, you know, to go to the planning commission variance, the planning commission can't review it until after they, after we give or don't give.
Right.
Based on the fact that, based on the evidence that has been presented, and the fact that subsection would be detrimental to the views or to the aesthetics, uh, I'd like to give approval based on the evidence that has been presented, year-round screening being provided on the, on the berm, the approval of the planning department.
Before I take a second, anybody want to add anything?
I have comments, if we're looking for comments. Sure, let me see, and maybe that way, we could, if we need, uh, lighting, shielding, the lighting, the landscaping, the specifics of landscaping, we'd be looking at a variance issue as it relates to this being a new change of use. It seems like it is to me, but again, I don't want, not my intent, but I, that's why I ask, you know, can you make it on conditions? Can it be approval of the planning commission? That way, it doesn't have to go back, but the key thing here is that if the variance is no recourse other than to approve, even though they may, uh, agree with the variances that were approved, I don't know how to do it. That's Paul's problem, you know? You know, how do you, how do you work as a team? But, uh, I'm just, there's a lot more issues that we look at on the planning level than just the variance issue. What had happened was, there's a project that's, uh, the wagon wheel, uh, oh, no, is it on liberalized? It's on Maple Road in, yeah, liberalized, yeah, okay. Yet, we didn't, we didn't review it at the planning level, where there isn't one new tree there, and I think that was bad. I mean, there are other issues like that that I think that are bad, because that's a, and to approve. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm really, I, I think Rosetti has a very good name, they're a good architectural firm. Uh, I, I just don't know. And I thought, well, if you wanted to partially make it a condition of...
There are new ordinances, and this, this, everybody, there's a division of labor, so that's not going to work. Referring this to the planning, first would be to adjourn this and have the petitioner bring in a landscaping plan to see if, for probably a month. But if you're that concerned about it, you don't want to make conditions which you don't, and you decide if you feel comfortable with it. Obviously, by your comments tonight, who knows what we want?
The way the resolution is, where the landscaping has to be approved by better control than looking at a plan, because once he installs it, the planning department, uh, 12-month, uh, screening. Whereas if we look, you know, we don't, we don't know what we're getting. We don't know that we're getting 12-month screening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clark. I think, uh, I'm in agreement with, with the, um, hundreds of evidence has to be shown by the petitioner, and we're uncomfortable, but, you know, our piece of motion can be conditional, including that you didn't mention in your, um, uh, I would like to see the full package between the four seasons and the increased berm as to Mr. Stratt's comments, but, you know, I, we have to make a decision here amongst us at the board, if we want to pump it back to the petitioner and let them come back, or be very crystal clear about those, those, those pieces of information we would like to see, and then trust, uh, the professional staff at the city to ensure that that's the case. I, I think, uh, at this point in time, I'm not sure about the, certainly about the landscaping. We approved it tonight, or we weigh it, the petitioner wouldn't be installing those items right now anyway, because of the winter. So, I'm not sure, and it sounded like the petitioner wanted to get an approval and move forward as quickly as possible. Benefit of what this, what I guess you were saying about, you know, letting them come back with very specific plans as she is particular issue. I was thinking about increasing it and making it, perhaps add to Mr. Stratt's comments while making it...
Mr. Stratt?
Okay, one of the only other comments I'll make is that, in addition to what, as you know, that we have several sites that actually have lighting that spill out way beyond the actual limitations of the site, and rather than having, uh, and, and, you know, we've, we've actually, Paul has actually had people actually look over that, and we know this is going to be lit, especially as it relates to the loading dock area and everything else, you know? But I feel kind of, but this is an example of what's in the future. If you're going to be doing this in the future, and then we, additions, and then it goes to the planning commission, the planning commission is handcuffed, you know, in, in many ways. I, I, oh, I, it's just...
Okay, well, the hopes this board and their deliberation, uh, with, and for several people here, including the applicant, they indicate a willingness, shows indicate quite possibly, uh, not just, uh, year-round vegetation, but perhaps decreasing the berm, according to we can do that. Certainly, if I have a question about whether or not the department understands that, you know, new ordinance has some very strict standards, and strict, but specific standards regarding, like, uh, urines, lighting, on builds, regardless of lighting, and, uh, I can certainly attest that any light that's, actually, it's not, it's required to not leave the property. So, we're covered on that, too. From up in the motion, that perhaps gives us a set of standards, um, I'll give you my input as to whether or not we have kind of... That worked out really well. Everything was specific. I was able to actually show a little mock-up I did. Vegetation needed to go where on the property. He went ahead and did it, like a week after he told me. Time's running out on this motion.
I would add the additional, additional, uh, berm, but, because you don't want a grade that's going to be hard to maintain. Where the view of the loading dock is.
Can you enlarge this a little bit? This is one of the plans, and I put the proposed landscaping screen. I'm not entirely, in this area, do you want to go further? I know there's some discussion about further. Do we want the berm?
Go further north because of the, uh, trash compactor.
I would suggest that it curve all the way around and attach to the, the, the one that's horizontal, and make it go all, yeah.
Yeah.
So that it could be annulated, so it, it creates an interest in, uh, it makes some interest. And it could be ivy. It could be a combination of landscaping.
We haven't secured one at this time.
Yeah, well, anyway, I don't want to tell you what to do.
So, are we looking for a berm kind of in a rough fair way to put that? What slopes in that? But we're not engineers, and, and I certainly can't expect anyone here to, uh, you know, do, so, uh, we're just trying to get an idea of, uh, what kind of work we're having. Okay, undulation, that, and that's, you're talking...
Lower, it's practical, but again, you know, don't want to, well, don't want to create a...
As peaceful. The height of this table, is it three feet tall, or are you talking a six-foot-tall berm, or...
Could be.
Four and a half, or is it not?
I don't think there's anything there.
It's about four, right? For, for, for the applicant, did you...
Yeah, we're going to want to kill off vegetation that's there.
Mr. Fisher?
It seems like our, our main goal here is to provide not only privacy for the applicant looking out, but for... We simply need a height requirement. Can we have, the, the vegetation has to have a certain, say, the top of the building? Wouldn't that take care of it? And whatever the landscapers want to do on the bottom?
Height requirement. Minimum height requirement. Yeah, because actually...
Minimum height?
Right. See, you are looking at, so it is a lot, and we're really concerned about more of the driving vehicle, we are. I mean, that would work, uh, but see, I, I have concern about the assembly that's going to be, and the stationary... What do you have there? Uh, those two, those two little platforms, delivery truck. Those are going to be pretty much stationary all the time, right? Yeah. Those, you want to hide that, but at four feet, minimum, that'd be fine. But it could be something that is a romance. It doesn't...
Where is it? Now, now we're designing.
Yes, don't, don't be specific. Slank, Castor's saying, we don't have to design it for them. We just have to verbally tell them what we want.
You don't want to give the, the, be able to work with what's there, and, you know, they may come up with something that's even better than what we're thinking of here, so...
I think it's, and four-season landscaping, and not only now, but as this stuff grows as well, that basically, when people drive down the road, they're going to see the trouble, which is the vegetation screen. I'm going to say, uh, okay, year-round vegetation screen can be placed on the berm, but it can't undulate.
Which way?
Which way? That's what he indicated, it's four feet, but it doesn't go...
And by the whole way.
Doesn't go the whole way. Oh, I understand, I should add, too, so it's up, down, and possibly thickness, and thickness.
It's technically easier to...
Work just serves as a guide.
Yeah.
You know, if the landscaper gets this motion to existing, and where there are limits, north, south, uh...
Well, they take the dark green areas and just kind of wrap them around, attach it together.
Let me see if I can draw a line here. He did indicate that there's some trees here, but I can't...
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want to kill off trees.
Kind of over here, come down here, like that, maybe, or the property lines here, we don't have that much room. I'm just going to the property line, roughly.
No, I'm not too worried about south. I think they go far enough south. Are you, are you going south or north?
I'm going south here.
I don't think they need to go any further south, really.
Oh, okay, all right.
The berm height, though, already is sufficient, south of there. Just take the two green pieces and wrap them together as, except where you might be killing off trees.
All right, no, good, good.
You don't want to kill off trees in that area.
I'll read this off. Let me just draw this line in here. This is very helpful. Basically like that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me try to reread the motion back, is that fair? To grant, and you talked about the reasons why you wanted to grant, and your condition would be is to place year-round vegetation screen, uh, on the existing berm, and to also extend the berm northward and westward, as indicated on the overhead, which would make that be part of the record. And this berm would undulate, the new berm would be undulate, would be approximately four feet tall, similar to the existing berm, except with killing vegetation. approximately four feet tall, similar to the existing berm, except with killing vegetation.
Yeah, if there's any spot there where it's going to kill a tree off, bypass that portion.
I've got an understanding, I think we can work with that, I think it's clear enough for the department, in case we have any questions, or if we continue on with the second motion, or?
Let me add one other thing, and that is, the petitioner's indicated that the green space that's created will exceed the amount that's lost, you know, I'd like them to ensure that that's part of the motion as well.
Mr. Chair, and I would, Eric, this is much of a call as to the board, you need to indicate that the trash container has to be enclosed in a certain material, or is that covered in the ordinance?
That's covered in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any additions or any questions on that motion before I look for a second? Mr. Neal?
Only procedure one is, I really appreciate Mr. Evans helping to crack that. Is, in our minutes, I know we're going to have to take, and we have a short form minutes, will the actual text be in the short form, or in, you know?
Yeah, I'm going to put that in, just because if we or staff needs to refer to that, it will be a little clear, also for the applicant's identification, we can be able to give a copy of that information to them, and they can pass it on to their professionals to help them understand what happened.
I think it'd be helpful.
Mr. Stratt.
I don't know if you want to add in there that it's going to also conform to all of the ordinance as it relates to the lighting.
We can, although in staff's opinion, it'd be superfluous.
Okay. I don't want to add more, but it would be very nice if they lit up the trees from underneath, but I think that would be kind of pushing the envelope. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, okay.
We'll strike that from the record.
Yeah.
That won't be in the motion.
No.
Any further suggestions for the motion in front of us, or questions about? If none, is there a second to the motion from Mr. Courtney? Mr. Neal seconds it. I really indicate that we have one letter of support for this variance, as the petitioner, are these conditions that you believe are something you can work with?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, and Mr. Evans, we're ready for the roll call.
And before I, Mr. Neal made the second?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Motion passes, the variance.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Back to the agenda, we're done with cases, communications, I believe we each received from, information from the Michigan Planning Association. Any other communications from staff or us?
No, there's no communication, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Under miscellaneous business, the only thing I wanted to bring up, and Mr. Bartnik, who was not here tonight, brought this to our attention, at least a few of us, the fact that we, with him being absent, and we have concern that Mr. Neal was going to make, and I'm lucky he showed up in time, that we're still waiting for council to appoint a couple of alternates to the zoning board of appeals, and some direction from the board members on how we'd like to go about encouraging either communication by city staff out to the public to let them know we're looking for people, because from my understanding, there are no applicants on file right now, or whether they would like to have me send a letter to the mayor and the city council saying we're looking for applicants. Any ideas, yes, Mr. Lancaster?
Just to let you know, because in the, or Mr. Bartnik's communication, that we should look into the alternate situation. I did talk to Lori Greenbaum, and she said council's very aware of it, they've had other issues on there quite recently, but she thought it would be very helpful if you could try and find people to apply, which seems to be the worst problem. In other words, if we got some applicants who could, you have friends, or family, or relatives that you think could do this job, and again, they'd only be alternates, they wouldn't have to come every month. Please, she asked, that you encourage them to apply, we really need them, because they need to have some applications to appoint, and she thought that was possibly a better way to do it, and she, she said they already know, they're very aware of it, it's just that they haven't, they need some applications.
Yes, Mr. Neal?
Are we looking for two?
Two, yes. So if you know anyone who's interested, and this is carried on the city public access channel, so if anybody watching the meeting is interested in applying for one of the alternate positions, you know, you can contact Mr. Evans at City Hall, and he can tell you what you have to fill out to apply for the position.
Right, right, essentially, there's a form that you fill out at the city clerk's office, and that information will be transmitted to city council. One comment I have, if I may, in addition to that, Cindy Stewart of the city indicated that she'd be more than happy to do a press release, indicating that there's a need for alternates. The Troy Today, which is our newsletter that's sent to everybody, comes out in spring, hopefully we won't need to utilize that, and we have, we can do that if we want. So I think we do have a couple applicants here, I sat down with Brent Sadna, the planning director as well, and we didn't come up with somebody who, you know, lives in Troy today, who knows, somebody who comes to our power, we might not have thought of, because we deal with people who have some familiarity with these kinds of zoning things. So we're putting our heads together, too. It would be a three-year term, and the alternates, they do sit at a meeting, receives $25 per meeting, and the city will provide alternative.
Big incentive.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Stratt.
Along with the same lines, just to let you know where I stand, the planning commission asked that I continue on, and I understand, according to the Michigan, the state regulations, that the person that is on the ZDA, his term lasts as long as he is on, or he or she are on the planning commission, so it's as long as that, although what they did was, they asked that I stay, or they said that I would stay on, however, other issues are coming up right now, and there's three of us that are up for a reappointment, so I don't know if we're going to be reappointed or not, so there's a possibility that, I mean, depends on the mayor, and it's a mayor's appointment, whether or not, you know, she chooses to have somebody else come in, there's three of us that are up for a reappointment, so, I mean, so, good chance that maybe all three of us are going to be gone, who knows, I don't know.
So, after the board of appeals, that's a point about mayor and council.
You could still apply for an alternative.
Oh, yeah.
Make a position here.
It might be a motion, actually. I'm on your side, you want me to stay, or?
I'll ask Cindy to do a press release, and she should see that in the next few weeks on our local newspaper.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, I just heard a hang-on to the Troy Today, and if anyone runs into anyone who has an interest, definitely can drop me or the city clerk's office, and we'll make sure that they get an application, give them a standing, what the meetings are, anything they need to know, if they're comfortable applying, we'll send it on to council.
Thank you.
I have a funny story for the chair.
Sure.
We had board on ZDA work in a different city I work for, and they were desperate for even members, so we had a husband and wife team volunteer, and they constantly canceled each other's vote, so, but wives are welcome, neshers.
Oh, I can't imagine.
Any further miscellaneous business to bring from board? Seeing none, we're open for public comment, but no one from the public is here, so we are ready to adjourn. See you next month.